Good evening, everyone. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate meetings of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. Now, I know Harbor Media is recording tonight, and the Inc. are also informing that they will be recording tonight. If anyone else is planning to record this meeting, could you unmute yourself and please let me know? Okay, not seeing anyone. The next order of business is Item 2, the approval of minutes, the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 21st, 2020.
I move that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 21, 2020.
Thank you, Carlos. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Next is the approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 22nd, 2020, which was a joint meeting with the Board of Selectment and Advisory Committee.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on December 22nd, 2020, held joint with the Board of Selectment and the Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Michelle. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Minutes are approved. Item 3, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guest wishes to speak, please go to the bottom and click on the Participants button, and then use the Raise Hand function, and then unmute yourself and state your name and address. And you address your comments to the chairperson, which is me. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the school committee. As established by the Massachusetts General Law, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, 1, select and evaluate the superintendent; 2, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and 3, establish educational goals and policies for the schools in the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to continue to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. So with all of that being said, does anyone have a comment on something that is not on the agenda tonight? If you do, again, if you could go down to the Participants button and use the Raise Hand function.
Here, I believe that Wendy Driscoll has her hand up.
I see Wendy. I recognize.
Can you hear me?
Yes, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Wendy Driscoll, 24 Charles Street in Hingham. I know that we've had a couple of emails with the administration, and I had something longer prepared, but I shortened it. Want to keep to the time, and I know that we're going to have a discussion with the broader community in the next meeting regarding the DESI results, so I just wanted to take maybe a minute or two just to read something in preparation for that. It's not long, I promise. I'm here to try and help, and I continue to advocate for more in-person time. As you know, there was a new data set shared by DESI. The intent from Commissioner Riley was to raise awareness and for communities and parents to compare results. I know we've had some emails, and then a review will be shared at the next meeting for the community. I'm really hoping the DESI finding shining light on how we compare and how we can use the results in a positive manner to drive action. We need a sense of urgency. Hingham's results were dismal and disappointing. It doesn't matter if we're the bottom 5% or the bottom 15, or honestly, the bottom 20. I know that the recess is one thing, but it doesn't really matter. We're in the bottom. The disturbing takeaway is we're bottom dwellers across student learning time and in-person time for our hybrid schools. And this is a blow to a community that strives for excellence in education. It doesn't take much to know this, in that we've been telling you the same thing for months regarding other communities' plans. All you have to do is talk to parents in other towns. The seven to eight hours a week of in-person student learning time is pretty much a remote school. That's what you can call us, and that's what the data shows. Now that we have resolved the space issue, the one thing holding us from progress across K through 5 grades is the union stipulation of three weeks green. Over 222 schools have more in-person time than we do, and they are doing this now, and they have no green status requirement. 95% of these schools are red and yellow status right now. I have the data in front of me. These are the facts. I have several recent press releases that have been going out. Cambridge, Weymouth, Hanover are all planning January and early February returns without a green status requirement. Again, 220 schools, and this is around 200 for grades 3 through 5, have figured this out. What are you going to do, and are you going to help or not? Dr. Austin, the school committee, are you going to help resolve this and get us past this three-week stipulation that is not needed? I know that there's no comments, but I just wanted to share that in preparation for the report out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. I am not seeing any other hands. So we will move on to Item 4, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Oh, thank you. It was the bell. I've never been announced by the bell before.
Wendy got it in just under the wires.
Well, Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to come tonight and discuss things. And as I've done traditionally over the last few months, is to give you an update on the COVID-19 and its prevalence within our school system. So I'll start with, as I always do, a little bit of a PowerPoint. So right now, this is the town data, and you've all been following whether or not we're yellow, red, green. This week, we did revert back to red with a case total of 58.6, 100,000. And so that takes us along with, when you have, on the chart below that is the positive test rate, which is 5.29%, which took us back to the red again. So the expected surge after the holidays certainly came, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the, what that looked like in the school. So in our schools, we've, this past week, we had 37 cases in our school system. We went from 88 total cases a week ago to 125. In that, we had 19 at the high school, 7 at the middle school, and 11 pre-K through 5. So it was a very busy week. The majority of those cases, almost all of them, came during the holidays, so people who were not in schools during the holiday, and it came from that period. But seriously, something that we are looking at and we monitor very closely. The good news is, you know, the incredible limit to any close contacts, et cetera, that would cause spread within schools. And so we're going to continue to watch this very, very closely. So we always keep our quarantine report, and I want to preface all of our information. This does not come from the Board of Health. This comes from self-report. And so it's as accurate as we can be on self-report. But right now, in the district, we are just under 110 people that are in quarantine right now. And so, and then that's broken down by the high school, we have 46, middle school, 22, and then we have various elementary schools in the single digits, with East actually at 14, and the overall staff, we have 10 staff in quarantine right now. I also remind people that we have to run a school system. We need staff to do that. At the 10, we can still run our system. We have subs. But if that goes up, that's going to be a point of concern that I want to make sure people are very aware of. And so that's another number we watch. So the quarantine report, which is the third highest quarantine that we've had since the beginning of our tracking. So those are the COVID numbers this week. They are something we're watching very closely. This is something that, you know, we hear a lot about, what's going around the nation. It is a very scary time. It is hard to come into buildings sometimes when there's a lot of people. I appreciate without question the heart and stamina of our staff, of our teachers, of our administrators, who are getting there every day and doing the job. But suffice it to say, people are nervous. I appreciate what they're doing. We are continuing on right now. And I also preface, people ask me all the time, when do you shut down? You know, my standard has been very clear that if there's any cross contamination, any cross, you know, cases that happen within the schools, that becomes a cluster, so that's any more than two or three coming out of the same place, I've taken immediate action in the past, as you saw with Plymouth River. If that were to happen again at any of our schools, I would do the exact same thing and take immediate action to protect our staff and students. But those are things that we're doing right now. I am also happy to report that we're going to be getting our staff testing this week. I will begin that on Thursday, and we're very excited. We are ramping up. So this week, we are testing 100. Next week, we're testing 200. The week after, we're testing 300. And we will continue to ramp up as we get this going. The Governor also announced on Friday afternoon, or Friday evening, that there was the potential of pool testing, should the districts want to do that. I will tell you that I have indicated that we are interested in moving forward, and I will be attending a webinar tomorrow to get more information on what pool testing would look like. But I believe that testing is an absolute essential piece of moving forward and getting our kids back to school, and I am optimistic. I know there's a lot of people that are very anxious about moving back to school and what that means, but I am optimistic as we now think about vaccine rollout, and we're still ways away, but vaccine, getting people tested, becomes the future for us. And so I am absolutely vigilant on that. I want to let everyone know that. I am moving full ahead. This is my top priority right now, of getting people tested, and then I'll turn to the vaccine as soon as that becomes available. And so that's the COVID report.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Dr. Austin on the COVID report? I'm not seeing any, and just the pool testing news was great news. I was really happy to see that, too. So I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward with that. The next thing, I think you are going to give us an update on the opening of Foster North.
We'll start that, but I'm going to turn this over to the very capable hands of Dr. Wilcox here in just a moment. But first of all, we are moving forward. We actually had our cabinet meeting at Foster North this morning, and it's coming along. They're making great progress inside. It's really great to see that being done, and we're excited about that. But before we even start, I'd bring this over to Dr. Wilcox. I just want to thank her and her team, with her Assistant Principal, et cetera, Jen Newell, and the amount of work that's been done so far. They've really done a tremendous job of preparing. She is the project manager, and I will turn it over to her and talk to Wilcox.
Thank you, Dr. Austin. I wanted to start by sharing some updates about the tremendous work that our maintenance department has done over the break. So first, I'd like to start by thanking our maintenance department, led by Katie Hartman, for all their work. Over the break, a deep clean took place. The rooms, the classrooms, have been set up and measured with student desks. And in addition to that, any materials that belong to the archdiocese have been removed and stored. So we also have signs that have already been placed up, reminding students and staff of hand washing and masks, as well as the office and nurses' space is being set up. So there has been quite a bit of work over the break, since the break, from our maintenance team. In addition to that, I also need to thank Joe Andrews and Colin McGinnis and all the work of the Technology Department. They have also been working nonstop at the building and have been wiring the building, placing smart boards that are already located in the classrooms, and they are also continuing to wire the building. For safety and security, today, we conducted a walkthrough of the building with our Hingham SRO, Officer McGillicuddy. She was able to take a look at our drop-off and pickup procedures, and she was able to give us some insight into those, as well as to provide us with some insight into updating our emergency response packet. So we have the district-wide emergency response packet, and we will be updating that packet to make some adjustments and to put in building-specific items for the building. While the building is located in Weymouth, we will be working with the SRO from Weymouth, and we've already received those contacts. And we will also be working with the Weymouth Fire Department to conduct the first fire drill within the first three days, as that complies with the legal obligations. We have also had our, the air purifiers that are located and have been placed in the building as well, as well as the CO meters. We have transportation. The buses are used for Foster North. All students in grades 1 and 2 who are assigned a bus will have some new bus info, and we'll be sharing this the week prior to February 1st with our families. For food services, we've met with the Director, Kim Smith, and she will be providing the same lunches to our students that they had at the, at our current building. So the process will remain the same for all of our parents. They will be ordering online prior to 6:00 AM of that day. For staffing, we have classroom teachers and the parent educators will remain the same. We want to help with our transition with our students, and we want to make sure the consistency is there. Our reading specialist and one of our Title I tutors will be located at Foster North. We will also have the school psychologist and adjustment counselor, who have worked out a schedule to provide social-emotional support daily for our students at Foster North. We want to make sure that those social-emotional needs are also, making sure that we have staff available for students for those social-emotional needs. And we are currently in the process of interviewing and hiring an additional nurse for the location that is taking place this week. Mrs. Watson, who is our Office paraprofessional, will be located in the office. She's familiar with our families. She's familiar with our students, and so she is going to be the welcoming face at the building. And we also have Dr. LaBella, who will be our central office staff, central office staff member, who will be at the building the first week. For students, we have organized a field trip for our students. So this is taking place the week of January 25th. For our Cohort A students, they will be traveling to the building on Monday, January 25th. For our Cohort B students, they will be traveling to the building on Thursday, January 28th. We have secured two buses, so each class, there will be two classes going at a time. Each class will have its own bus to transport over to the building, and there will only be two classes in the building at one time. We also want to make sure that we're following all of our distancing protocols, and so first grade and second grade will have one class each. We, for parents and families, we have organized an information session via Zoom on Wednesday, January 20th. And for this, teachers will also be sharing a photo of their classroom space for parents. We did consider doing a video tour of the building, however, we had some concerns. We want to make sure that we are ensuring safety and security, and we have been advised that when you tour, when you go through and tour a building by video, it, sometimes you want to make sure that you're not sharing anything that could become a safety concern. So we are sharing photos of the space. And then additional information about drop-off and pickup procedures will be shared. We are extending the time of the drop-off and pickup at Foster North by 10 minutes on each end. And so we want to make sure that we will share more specifics with all of our families, but that's an overview of the process and what has taken place in each of the different compartments.
Thank you. It sounds like you've been hard at work. A lot of logistics to work out. Does anyone on the committee have any questions for Dr. Austin or Dr. Wilcox on Foster North?
Sorry.
Sorry, Michelle?
No, sorry. Just not so much a question, but an observation, listening to all that. That is a lot to undertake for a district to open up another school in the middle of not only a school year, but in the middle of a pandemic. And I know that there are a lot of folks who, on this call and in the community, who are asking for more in-person time, and I just want to assure those folks that this, these are the steps that are being taken to try to get more in-person instruction from the students, and this is a really big start, and this is a Herculean effort, and I don't think that we can overlook how much work is going into this. So thank you to Dr. Wilcox for taking this on as project manager, because I don't recall that being in the job description when I was on the selection committee for filling the foster principal role. And to Dr. Jamie and Dr. Austin, who I believe you're both can share the administrative responsibilities at the building, in addition to your other work, as well as the faculty, the HEA, really everybody who is in this. I know that, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of angst in the community and a lot of anxiety, but I really do think that this is a huge step forward, and really appreciate all the work that's going into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Liza?
Carrie, I'd like, just like to add, thank you, Dr. Wilcox, and that once we move grade 1, you know, the grades over to St. Jerome's, it's also going to benefit the students that are still at Foster, because they'll have the cafeteria space back. They'll have that, the computer room space back, the other space that's being used for classrooms, that will make more flexible for the students that remain at Foster. And then at St. Jerome's, those students there will have the gym space and the other space, like the other elementary schools do. So it's going to allow us to really get going, and it'll make it easier for everyone. So thank you for all your work, and I know it's adding more and more to your plate. And hopefully soon, we'll get you a new building even, move into, so thank you.
Carrie?
Jen? Sorry. Jen had her hand up.
Hi, I just want to quickly piggyback on what everything Michelle and Liza said, and I just wanted to mention that I'm really pleased to see that you're doing the extended time at the, at the drop-off, at the, at the pickup at the end of the day. I know we spoke last at the school council meeting, it was something that you had mentioned, some parents were concerned with being to get from Foster and then over to Foster North, and I'm happy to see that. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
Sorry, not to continue on with the love fest here, but I realize that, a huge thank you also to the unsung hero of John Ferris. Thank you, John, because this, this is not the only district looking at this spot. So kudos to you and your team for all that you did to secure it for the Hingham community. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any other school committee members that have any questions about that? Okay, seeing none, I don't see any questions. So next is Item 5, Communications. First is 5.1, Student Communications, and I think we have Carly on the line. If you want to unmute yourself, Carly.
Yes. Hi. Okay. So recently, the Student Council has completed their video that the committee asked, we made last meeting, and consists of a handful of clips of students sharing their experiences with COVID, and how it has affected them, while also urging them to curb the spread. The video has been distributed throughout the school, and it will be broadcasted on Harbor Media this week, and we hope that with this distribution, more students will listen to their peers and be more apt to listen. The Student Council has also been working on an Eye of a Dream video in honor of Martin Luther King. Students are submitting videos of themselves talking about their dreams and aspirations for a world and community. With the Assembly this year, the videos that have been made are an attempt for unity and awareness during this difficult time. The debate team has been participating in various debates virtually twice a month, and they're partnered with the speech team this year. The Drama Club is collaborating in a festive Zoom as their home meeting, and their partner with another school will hold this performance virtually. Over the holidays, the orchestra and band worked together to create a virtual holiday performance over Zoom, and that video is also released on Twitter for the community to see. And then our school has been working with the food pantry, as the class of 2024 helped deliver bags of non-perishable items before the holidays, and our soccer team also raised $5,000 for the kids.
Great, thank you very much, Carly, and thank you for all your efforts to navigate this tough time. Does anyone have any questions for Carly? Okay, seeing none. 5.2 is Communications Received by the Superintendent. Dr. Austin, do you have anything?
I do have a couple of things. First of all, I've already mentioned that the Commissioner sent us a letter, or from his office, regarding the pool testing. And so once again, I've put in the initial survey that we are interested in moving forward, and we are attending a workshop tomorrow at 10 o'clock to get more information on that. That's part. I also want to acknowledge, I get a lot of email from all of you, and I want you to know that I read every single one of them. I don't always respond. The reality is, I just don't have enough hours in the day to try to do that, as well as the other duties that I have. But we do try to respond to the ones that I can, and I thank you for them. I know that they're not always in agreement with what we do, and that's fine. As I said in my communication last night, the ability to disagree in agreeable ways are really acceptable, and I appreciate that. And so I also appreciate your patience and the fact that knowing that I just can't get every single one of the emails. My priorities this week are clearly on getting our testing moving, getting our people in place to be able to move into more in-person. We started our kindergarten today, and that went very well. I don't want to not say that, because we got the kindergarten in. It was awesome. I know I heard from principals, having all of our students in the classroom, it was a great day, and it was a great accomplishment, a heavy lift, and we got there. On Wednesday, we begin our cohorts of 1 and 2 that'll come into the classrooms on the every other Wednesday. So we are moving forward, and we continue to go in this direction. So very proud of all of our staff for doing that. And then, 3, I just want to say a heartfelt thank you to so many people out there. I've got a ton of cards and letters this week, after experiencing a personal loss. That meant the world to me, and how much I appreciate you becoming so important to me, and you taking the time to write me something personal with my loss this week. And it's been a tough week, but I'm appreciative of all of you and how we've moved forward because of that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have anything for other communications, which is 5.3? Liza?
Yeah. I just wanted to share that we've received a couple of emails from parents sending us media reports about what other states are doing for returning to school and other communities. And today, I responded to one of them. I love reading all this stuff. I've been reading a lot of it. But I wanted to point out that one was cited for what they're doing in Minnesota, and another one was an op-ed from Maryland. And when I looked into the Minnesota report, I did find the Minnesota guidelines from their Education Department, and we are doing what Minnesota's recommending for more in-person learning for their students. And the message was focused on a lot of schools there that are fully remote, and encouraging them to go back to in-person hybrid or full in-person. But I'd like to share with everyone, as I did with the person who wrote to us, is that their health and safety requirements are the same as what we're following. Masking for everyone, six-foot distancing, proper ventilation, testing, which we're starting this week of staff and eventually students, and also low transmission rate of the virus in their community. And they also point out in their guidelines, planning scenarios for moving between learning models, because they note in Minnesota that minimal to moderate because they note in Minnesota that minimal to moderate community spread is, as the assumption for the in-person learning. And also that confirmed cases among students and staff is relatively small. And those are the same factors that we're considering. I also shared with this person that every day, I get an email report from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees with daily education media coverage. And today, there was a list of reports who have gone full remote or continuing in full remote. And just today, Husack Valley, Berkshire Hills was noted, Gateway Regional, Amherst, Haverhill, Worcester, Lexington, Triton Regional, and Dayton-Rohoboth was just today, the list of schools that are at full remote. And, you know, we've been, and we know Marshfield, our neighboring communities in that situation. And Hingham is fortunate that we've remained open. And as Paul just mentioned, you know, we brought kindergarten back today and we're continuing with the alternating Wednesdays. So, we have not gone to full remote. We have not disrupted our students' current routines. And also, I also shared with the person that in today's daily media report, there was also an updated research report dated January 6th from The Intercept, which is an online news source, that was a study that titled, "As the Virus Surges, New Studies Suggest Warning for School Reopening." "New Evidence Suggests That As Community Rates of COVID-19 Increase, So Do Risks of In-Person Learning." And this article cited studies from early December with evidence in Florida. And then, in the last two weeks, there was a Tulane University study. And then, studies from Washington State and Michigan and also from England. And it was relating hospitalization rates and transmission in communities and where schools were open. And there was a correlation of the risk of schools reopening fully. And so, and that's very, very recent information. So, you know, as we can, we all want our students back. But the focus that we need to get to is from moving Hingham from red to green to get down to this low transmission. So, we appreciate all the advocacy for more in-person learning. But I just wanted to share with all of you that as much, you know, we're reading everything we see too. And we're following all these guidances and reading all these studies. And that's just something, you know, I did communicate this back to somebody who shared this information today and wanted others to hear it as well.
Great, thank you, Liza. Does anyone else on the committee have any other communications? So, I have one, actually, because I've been thinking about our communications a lot. As Dr. Austin and Liza noted, we've all received many emails from parents in the community on a variety of topics. And we've worked to respond to them. We've also had a lot of parents and community members attend our meetings and communicate that way, which we welcome. And we all really appreciate the public interest in our business meetings and know that people have a lot of questions and concerns that go beyond our agenda items at any given meeting. So, but it's important to note that our meetings are of the school committee in public. These are meetings of the school committee in public. They're not public meetings or public forums. At the same time, we want to make sure that people are heard. So, it was suggested that maybe to give parents and the community members the opportunity to ask questions and bring concerns to the committee in maybe a less formal setting, we start hosting some office hours over Zoom once a week. Many committees and other districts do it. And it would give us an opportunity for more two-way communication. And we can help direct questions and concerns to the right person or place, too. So, my thought on that is maybe if we started doing that, we could do it once a week for an hour or two and just take turns with one or two committee members hosting each time. And so, I was just wondering if anyone else in the committee had any thoughts on that idea?
Yeah, I think, I think it's, sorry. I think, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. And I'm happy to, to sign up to do some of the office hours.
Great.
And I'd be willing to do them in the evening, too, if you want to do, because I work during the day. But if you want to do some evening hours, I'd be happy to do those.
That's great. Yeah, I think, I think that would be important. Libby, did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I was gonna wait until the subcommittee report. This information for the community outreach, subcommittees have scheduled to the office with the superintendent in early February that will also be in a bigger opportunity for people to have a more informal conversation with superintendents. So, I can give those dates now or we can make it later. But February 3rd and February 4th, Wednesday, the 3rd is at 9:00 a.m. And February 4th is at 7:00 p.m.
That's great. Yeah, thank you, Libby. Liza, did you have something?
Yeah, I think it's, it's a good idea. And, you know, I think if it's three of us or on the call, or two or three of us would be good. So, it's not just one. We all kind of, we all have our expertise, too, in certain areas. And, you know, maybe if there's like a theme or a specific topic that we hear a lot about, if that specific school committee member could take it on at that, that time, then you're gonna get the person that knows the most about the subject, too. So, you know, I think it's a great idea and we'll figure out the schedule as we move along.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, and just for other people, for people on the call, we can't do more than three people at a time because of open meeting law. So, we have to stay below a forum, which is three. All right, so if everyone is okay with it, I will just, I'll send around a doodle and we'll kind of figure out some good times to do this. And we'll put out announcements to the community, too, so people know that this is available to them. So, okay, number six is, we're on to unfinished business. And 6.1 is to hear an update on the fiscal year '22 budget development. Dr. Austin?
I had to unmute myself before, totally, thank you. Once again, thank you. You know, as we've done every, every school committee meeting, just to give you a brief update. But right now, we seem to be moving along as expected right now. And we are continually waiting for, to see what any new stimulus will be available for. We're hearing good news on the front of getting more COVID relief. We just don't know what that is right now. And so, we are awaiting that news. But so far, we're moving along as we had predicted or projected. And I would ask John Ferris if he wanted to do that at all. You look very comfortable tonight, John.
Well, I am comfortable.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, thank you. The, yeah, we'll have another budget session going on on Thursday. You know, there's no new, like, you know, sources of money or anything like that that's popped up in the past couple of days. But, you know, clearly, we took, I took some of your input from Thursday and, you know, Thursday, from last Thursday. And this Thursday, we'll give an update, you know, make a couple of corrections and stuff. There's no corrections to the dollars. But, you know, there was, you know, perhaps an error or two in one of the slides and stuff. So, you know, we'll get those corrected and then talk about capital and finance, excuse me, capital. And, and, you know, and sort of the future steps. So, you know, and we'll continue our discussions. We're still really early and I haven't got much additional feedback from the town, you know, as of today either. So, I mean, I think this year, it's just gonna, it's gonna play out a little bit slower. We'll keep our agendas going and our meetings going. But, you know, I don't think that there's probably not a reason to rush a budget vote by the school committee or us to come to a resolution of a number quickly. Not sure yet about, you know, the meetings that may occur with ACES or with the, you know, board of selectmen or the overall advisory. So, I think those calendars, calendars are, have to be developed over the next, you know, week or so, a couple of weeks. Not sure exactly how long it will take. But I think we have, we have a good start and I think we have plenty of time for discussion and, you know, continued development of this budget.
I would just add on to that. At the last meeting, at the Thursday night meeting, we changed the meetings going forward to Thursday nights. So, people would be aware of that. So, we will meet on Thursday nights as we continue to roll this budget out and real discussion begins. But I agree with John that I think taking our time, continually move through that good discussion is really the key to our success in this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'm not seeing anything from the committee. I see Matthew Cosman has your hand up. If you can unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thanks, Carrie. Matt Cosman, 12 Summit Drive. And I apologize, my other computer, I wasn't able to raise my hand. So, I wanted to, am I, am I okay to go back to a comment earlier from the communications? Or did I miss my chance?
Which, sorry, which was?
Just from the, it was like, I forget, it was 5.3 or 5.2. Just, I don't have a comment on the budget. I just have a.
Oh, okay, yeah, no, we weren't taking comments on communications. These are things that people who emailed us. But feel free to reach out for to any of us about things through email. All of our contact information is on the website.
Okay. Carrie, can I, can I just, I guess maybe, while I have the floor, if it's okay? I just, I, I have to say, I appreciate all of the work that everyone is doing. But I just continue to be so disappointed. I hear what Michelle and others are saying in terms of St. Jerome and the Herculean work that was done. But it's to no real end because it's tied to green.
So, sorry, this isn't on the agenda for tonight, so we can't discuss it.
St. Jerome's wasn't?
No, the, the, the green and gray comment. Okay, so next, we are on to 6.2, which is to review proposed sections DG, H, and L of the Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual. And that is, so these are several sections. This is a second read for everyone. For anyone new to our meetings, over the past year, we've been reviewing the policy manual to make sure that we have all the legally required policies, as well as those that request best practices. And our current policy is not to do at least two reads of any proposed policy changes to give the committee members a chance to fully consider the proposed changes. So, this is a second read of DG, H, and L. As with the other sections, we have reviewed this, this year, the policy subcommittee reviewed, reviewed the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, or MASC templates, for these sections, along with the Hingham policies where we have them. Dr. Austin participated in our discussions and Susan Damato did as well for some of them. The policies were then shared with the appropriate administrators and the HEA for input. And if possible, we'd like to vote on these tonight. So, the first is policy section D, which is fiscal management. This section covers fiscal management goals, the budget process, fiscal accounting and reporting, revolving funds, and purchasing, among other topics. Dr. Austin did share this with John Ferris and he had a chance to review it. So, does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments on section D? I'm not seeing any. Would somebody like to make a motion? Okay, so just, just to be clear, too, the motion is to approve section D in form to be adopted once the committee approves all sections of the manual. So, Libby, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt section D in form until all of the sections are adopted by the school committee in total.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Did I paraphrase that?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Liza. Roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. So, section D is approved. Section G covers personnel. These cover personnel policy goals, staff ethics, including conflict of interest, staff conduct, gift, online fundraising, staff complaints and grievances, and hiring policies, among others. Susan Damato, our human resources director, participated in our meeting on this and gave feedback on the policies. And we did discuss how the equity initiative will impact district hiring. And these policies partially reflect that. But Dr. Austin recommended revisiting the hiring policies once the equity audit is complete. Does anyone have any questions or comments on section G? I'm not seeing anything. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve section G of the new Hingham Public School Policy Manual in form to be adopted once the committee approves all sections of the manual.
Thank you, Carlos. Do you have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Libby. Roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next is section H of the policy manual, which covers negotiations. And we'd note that this committee recently adopted these policies. So, the changes to this section are very minor, mainly wordsmithing. Does anyone have any questions or comments on section H? I'm not seeing any. Do you have someone make a motion on H?
I'd like to make a motion to approve section H in form until all of the sections are approved at the same time by the school committee.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Oh, second. Thank you, Liza. And roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. And then, finally, we have section L, which covers education agency relations. This is a short section and it covers the Hingham Public Schools' relationships with other schools and districts, including the social or educational collaborative and private schools located in Hingham. Does anyone have any questions or comments on section L? Okay, seeing none. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve section L in form of the Hingham Public Schools' Policy Manual.
Thank you, Liza. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Libby. So, roll call, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Ness?
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, number seven is new, we're on to new business, to hear a report from the counseling department on the 2020 College Board Testing and Placement Report. Is this Heather Roder? Yes, you're gonna.
That is me, hello.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here and hearing the report. So, I'm just going to share my screen in one second and get the report started. So, just bear with me for one moment. All right, here we go. All right, so, tonight's report is a, just kind of a summary of what happens in testing and placement for the class of 2020. There are some, so it's a snapshot in time, kind of of the performance of the graduating class. So, that's just kind of a broad overview. Way the ACT and the SAT, the college board, has been reporting some information has varied from past years. So, in some places of the report, the data that I'm sharing is based on the class of 2020 and some of it is the testing year 2020. So, I will try and be clear and let you know exactly what I'm talking about when I'm talking about it. But just wanted to kind of make that distinction. So, if we look at, sorry, I just have to move my little snapshot of the participants over a little bit so I can see. If we look at a snapshot of what happened with the class of 2020 and what their future plans were, we don't really see much of a difference from prior years that we did with the class of 2020. Obviously, secondary or post-secondary education looked very different this fall with the COVID situation happening, with a lot of post-secondary options being totally online. So, when we get some clearinghouse data later in the year, I will be interested to see what plans were versus what may have actually happened. But when we talked about what the plans for the graduating class were, this is what we have as of our knowledge. So, four-year colleges, we have just about 90% of students going on to four-year colleges. We have another 4% about going to junior or specialized schools. And then, about 1% going on to prep schools. So, the total continuing their education after Hingham High School is about 95%, 94.77%. The other options for students were going straight to employment, so working. We didn't have anyone going to the military that we were aware of at the time, last year. And then, students participating in gap year or other programs were 1.7%. And then, kids who were undecided, who really didn't have any specific plans, they might have been weighing several options, was 2.9. That looks a little bit higher than. That looks a little bit higher than it was in the past. That could have been due to kids. Really not knowing what the future was going to look like at a secondary, post-secondary institution. So, but we are pretty consistent with the percentages of students continuing their education that we have been since 2000. Next, in the report was just an overview of SAT data, so it's important to know what is the SAT. So here's some information. It is, it has changed over the years. There have been a number of different versions. They've re-normed it. So whenever I do this report, I just like to do a snapshot of what the actual test is so that people can see it because it does change every once in a while. We are back to the sixteen hundred scoring, so eight hundred per two sections. Of reading and writing and then a math section. There is an optional essay. The vast majority of post-secondary institutions do not require the essay. At least part, as part of the admissions process. Some of them will use it for placement. But very few of our students take the essay, or they may just take it once. And you take the test multiple times because most often students don't really need that for admissions purposes. So that is one slide on what the SAT is all about. Here's the second slide. So you can see the number of questions in each different section. There's only one essay. It's a fifty-minute essay. So they have lengthened the test in the past and now, if you do it without the essay, it is a little less long than it used to be in the past years. Whole bunch of information. I can share this, I could post it on the website when we're done, so you can kind of dig into it. It's all available on the College Board as well. So how did our students do? We always make the comparison to the state of Massachusetts as well as the nation. So our average last year was twelve oh seven. That is, out of the sixteen hundred, Massachusetts was eleven nineteen and Nationwide was ten fifty-one. And then we break it down at the reading and writing section. We are higher than Massachusetts and the nation as well with six oh eight. Five sixty for Massachusetts and Nationwide was five twenty-eight. And then the math section. Five ninety-nine for Hingham, five fifty-nine for the state of Massachusetts, and Nationwide a mean of five twenty-three. The ACT is a different test than the SAT. Every college in the nation will accept either the SAT or the ACT if they are not completely test optional. And so students can really choose which test suits their style best. The SAT is more of a reasoning test, so students are asked to first kind of discern what information is pertinent. And then what information within the question do they need to figure out what the answer to the question is? Whereas the ACT is a little more straightforward. It's more of a curriculum and content-based test. So students are asked a question and must figure out the answer, and they don't really have to do as much reasoning with the ACT test. So there are four subtests in the ACT, English, Math, Reading, and Science. So English and Reading separated, and there's the addition of the Science. Some students will, we offer, in Hingham's schools, we offer the pre-ACT. Which is a practice ACT in the sophomore year. In the junior year, we offer the PSAT, which is a practice SAT. So our students, if they so choose, can have exposure to both types of the test to see which one they feel they're more suited towards. So we do do that for students, so students can make that choice when they go to take it, quote-unquote, "for real." They can decide which one felt better to them because colleges really don't. If they want a test, they will take either the SAT or the ACT, so they want students to feel the most comfortable with which test they want to take. When we look at means, again, we do better than our comparison groups of Massachusetts and the nation. So for the composite score, composite score, so you see that in the lower right-hand side. Hingham has a twenty-six point six, Massachusetts is closer to twenty-six, and Nationwide it's a twenty point six. For the English section, we are slightly above Massachusetts at a twenty-six point three, where Massachusetts had a twenty-six. And the nation was nineteen point nine. Hingham has twenty-six point one, Massachusetts twenty-five point six, Nationwide twenty point two. Reading twenty-seven point two for Hingham, twenty-six point six for Massachusetts, and twenty-one point two for the nation. And Science is twenty-six point two for Hingham, twenty-five point four for Massachusetts, and Nationwide was twenty-two point six. I was reading and looking at all the data that the nation, the national mean for the ACT hit a ten-year low. Nationwide. We will see in a second for Hingham. We did not, which is good. We went a little bit lower than last year, but we still stayed higher than 2018. Right about in line with 2016, 2017, so we've covered about the same. We saw, it hasn't always been super popular in Hingham, but it has within the past decade been growing in popularity. And so we've seen an increase in test takers throughout the years. We saw kind of a bigger bubble in 2016 and 2000, between 2016 and 2018. And the number dropped a little bit. Last year, most of the graduating class of 2020 was through their test-taking cycle before COVID hit. So these scores weren't really impacted as much by the COVID situation for the SAT or the ACT. Because most students take them as juniors or in the fall of their senior year, whereas we went. Out of school in the spring of their senior year. So those students weren't really impacted. Next year, when we come together and we do this report, I'll be talking a lot more about the impact of COVID on the testing there. So when we look at AP, so Advanced Placement Tests, these are four to five hours subject-to-specific tests. They, our students, we offer between eighteen and twenty-one, depending on the year, AP tests. They are college-level classes. Hingham High School does require students upon completion of the course to take the exam. Last year was a little bit different. I'll talk about that in a minute. But when we look at a five-year mean, that would be for us, every single student who has taken that class contributes to the mean. When we compare Nationwide or even Massachusetts scores, that's not the case in every district and in the nation. So that's just something to know. In other districts, in other states among the nation, it may be just students who chose to take the test upon completion of the course. Where we require our students to do so. So that's just a little bit of a difference. But if we look at 2020, we had two hundred forty, two hundred forty-seven AP students. They took four hundred forty-seven exams, so most took more than one. We do have some classes, like one class for sophomores and a couple of classes for juniors. So those usually, for sophomores and juniors, they take lower numbers of AP. Where we see multiple AP classes, it's usually in junior, senior year primarily. We have two hundred thirty of the two hundred forty-seven students have scores with three or above. AP exams are scored on a one to five scale, five being the highest, three being what's considered a good or passing mark. So you'll see a lot of data about benchmark scores, percentage of three, scores of three or higher, and that's why. So that last box right there says exactly that. Ninety-three point one percent of our students scored three or higher on their exams. So this is just a mean, AP and mean grade comparison between Hingham, Massachusetts, and the nation. The asterisks are classes that there were ten or fewer students taking them. We can't report a reliable statistical mean for those classes, so probably we have asterisks. I do get each score reported, so I have the scores, but that's not something that we can share. On a wide basis. But if we see we do really well, we have a really high percentage of students who are getting high mean scores. We don't have anything below a three point oh, which is really great. When we look at our quote-unquote benchmark schools, we do a comparison as well. So you can kind of look at the official benchmark school districts. And see the number of tests that we take in comparison to those districts, and the number of exam scores at each score level. And then their percentage of scores three and above. So we had four hundred forty-five exams. I reported four hundred forty-seven earlier. The College Board and the Department of Education, it's elementary and secondary education for Massachusetts, have a two-person score difference. So I don't know if it's just a problem with the state of Massachusetts assigning students to, or not assigning. Students that were ours to us. Sometimes that happens. So I just wanted to kind of show that little difference. But we do have ninety point three percent of students getting scores three or better. For four hundred forty-five exams, which is. Right about in the middle of where the number of exams for our benchmark districts. So AP, the College Board, has decided to designate certain students as AP Scholars. So the number of exams that you take, as that rises, and as you do better on a higher number of exams. You can be awarded with an AP Scholar Award, and so there are different levels of those. What's interesting is this past year, I think the College Board scaled back a little bit. They were. Lowering the number of, they didn't want to encourage students to take too many exams because they were finding, I think, high stress levels when that was happening. And so they kind of changed the AP Scholar Awards a little bit. And didn't want to encourage kids to take too, too many AP exams at the same time. But they have different levels, so AP Scholar Award, Scholar with Honor, Scholar with Distinction, National Scholar. International Diploma and Seminar and Research Certificate. So as you go towards the right on the chart. Students take more and more exams and get scores, mean scores at higher levels. The International Diploma and the AP and Seminar, Seminar and Research Certificate are. They're not for every single student who takes AP exams. The Seminar and Research is a two-course sequence of classes that students. It's called the Capstone Diploma Program through the AP. And so students have to take those two courses in sequence and score at a specific level, level in order to get that certificate. And those classes are research-based versus just doing a test at the combination of the course. So that's a little bit different, but we did have five students do that, and that is a relatively new program. We've had that only for about three years. And when we talk about National Merit Competition, this is junior year. So any student who takes the test, the PSAT, as a junior. If they score in the top very small percentage of test takers nationwide, they could either become a commended student or a semifinalist. And last year in the class of 2020, we had sixteen commended students. We did not have any semifinalists. Which is not that unusual. There are years where we don't have anyone. And there were three hundred eight students in the graduating class, and so that was five percent of the class who earned the National Merit Scholarship combination, which is really great. So that is the end of the formal presentation. Happy to answer questions if anybody has questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Heather? I do, actually. I have a couple. Do you have a sense of the percentage of students with disabilities who take the SAT and the ACT?
That is a good question. So I have to do more digging for that because in the way that the SAT and ACT have both. They've both done complete overhauls of their score reporting systems. And so ACT used to give us the exact number of students that took the exam with accommodations and all sorts of data. And now they have cut that out and I can't find it. I actually had to send Julie for the school committee report. A second late-breaking version because I couldn't even get mean scores for state and national comparison until. Right before the report was due. We've been working on that all year. So for ACT, I need to find out, I'm working on getting that information because I know it's important. For SAT, they do not break that down and share it. The, what we would have to do is go student by student. And I would have to figure out if they are a student on an education plan and then figure out what the statistics are. So I can absolutely do that, but it's not something that they report anymore like they used to, so the data isn't readily available.
Yeah, I think that would be good for us to know. And I guess similarly, the percentage of students with disabilities who take AP tests, this is quite a question for a few years. Do you have any sense of that?
Yep, it's, so typically what we've seen in the past like five years when we started doing that data. Is we have one or two probably students on active IEPs that take AP exams or are in AP classes. And then we see a higher number of students who are either on five or four plans or had been on IEPs that don't have a plan. Because what the state does is they only track students who are on active plans at the time of the AP exam. So that's the only data that was available to us. But yes, we do have, we can get a sense of, you know, what's, what percentage that we know of students. And I was doing, making an analysis of students that. Been on IEPs at some point in their career, like with a past timeframe, so that we can get that information, yeah. But yes, typically it's, it's a smaller number of students on active IEPs and then it expands once we go to students with disabilities who have five.
Do you know if any, yeah, sorry, do you know if any took AP tests last year? In 2020?
I don't because what also happened last year is the, because COVID did hit and it did impact AP exams, thank you, I totally forgot to say this. So COVID hit in March and we closed down and AP exams are in May. And so what the College Board did is they made every single test optional for all students. We still strongly encouraged all of our students to take the AP exam, but we did allow it to be optional. Because we didn't know what they were dealing with in terms of personal impacts for COVID. And so instead of posting the exams on paper, the AP, the College Board changed it to. Students got an online exam code to take the exam. And if they didn't sign in the first time to take the exam, they could sign in, they would get a second code to take a late exam. And so we just got data recently about who actually tested, who didn't test. So in the full school committee actual report, not the PowerPoint presentation, but the school committee report, you guys do have those numbers of. I think there were only like thirty tests or thirty kids, I have it over here, but who actually didn't end up testing. So we had pretty full fidelity of students taking it, so I don't expect the number to change that much. Between students with disabilities who decided not to take it versus who did.
And I guess the other question I had is, I was looking at the benchmarks and the number of AP tests. And I think we've discussed this before too, but I did note that there are a number of towns that have lower enrollment than, than we do. But have higher number of students who take the AP test. Can you explain why we're, we're different than them? Does he have a well-situated, they're, they're smaller districts, but they have more, more tests or more students taking the tests?
Right, that I, I honestly don't know. I don't know, the, I'm AP testing coordinator. I'm not on the like curriculum development side of things, so I don't know if they have. More offerings or they just enroll more students in the classes that they do have. I'm not really sure exactly why that is. Why, you know, why they might be taking more exams than we are, because we do require our students to take exams. So we know every single student in a class is taking the exam. I don't know. At those schools, if that is the same or not.
Okay.
So I don't.
All right, thank you. Liza?
Heather, so more and more colleges are making the SAT and the ACT, you know, test optional for submission. Are you tracking or asking students to provide information about whether or not they're. You know, they needed to submit their tests, or are you getting a sense of that scenario with our students? If, are they going test optional or are they still submitting?
Yeah, so it, it's a funky year to kind of have very good, solid data and reasons why. Because this year in particular, a lot of colleges that normally would not be test optional waived the requirement to submit a test. Because they knew some students may have problems just logistically testing this year. So we do know that the percentage of our kids taking the test hasn't really changed much at all. What has happened is, you're right, a greater number pre-COVID are moving towards. This is colleges, that is, are moving towards being test optional. But with our students, they tend to apply to about an average of eight schools per student. And so one or two of their schools is not going to be test optional. So they do still have to take the test. So we are having increasing. So we are having increasing conversations about, okay, if these schools are test optional, should I submit my scores to them? Should I not? So we're kind of having both conversations with students because they're applying to schools that are purely test optional and then some that are not. Uh, so they are most still taking the test. We are having a handful, so not stat- statistically significant, significant, um, but a handful more kids who are seeking out to apply to totally test optional schools. So looking for colleges that don't require the SAT at all. But that is a pretty small handful. Um, I can probably count the number of kids on one hand that are looking for exclusively test optional schools. Um, but it is eking up a little bit, but just like I said, not statistically significant. We'll see after, um, we don't know when that will be, but after COVID, um, if because so many schools, so many colleges did go test optional this year, and I have a sense that they're going to be doing it for next year as well. Um, we'll see if they thought that that impacted the um admissions process and whether they still felt like testing would have been a valuable part of the admissions process or not. Um, and see even if they don't need to be test optional anymore because of logistics, will they make a move that way? So that's something that we're definitely interested to see for the future.
And are we, ex, do you have any prediction of what's happening in the spring with testing with the SAT and the ACT? Have they said whether they're going to be doing in-person testing or online?
Right now, it's all in-person testing. I think test center to test center, you will see decisions being made as to whether test centers will operate or not. Um, many of our area communities are not allowing outside people into their buildings. And so they are either shutting down their testing to non attenders from their schools. We, um, let's see, I think we we held September. So we, this whole school year, with the exception of August, I believe, we have stayed open as a test center. We added the additional senior Hingham High School Student School Day test. Um, in addition, because so many kids couldn't test because their test centers were getting shut down, but we've remained open as a test center. And as long as um our kind of decision-making team on that still agrees that if we're still open and running a hybrid hybrid program, we should still continue to offer the SATs. As we are at National Test Center Site, we will continue to do so. So there's no plan right now to shut down unless um something wildly changes and we have pockets of infestation of COVID and we can't do it, but we're planning to test.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle?
Sorry, actually, that was, that was basically my question about the testing for the spring. So I got it. Thank you.
Perfect.
All right, thanks. I see a hand up on this question. Uh, Chad from Boston Mass? If you could just state your name and address for the, um.
Sure, 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 sure. Well, good evening, everybody. Um, some of you I, some of you I do know from before. Um, Ness, yeah, let, you know, I'm here now. Sorry I was late. I was in a different Zoom meeting for totally different purpose.
Sorry, could you just state your name and address? Yeah, could you just state?
I thought I, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, my name, well, yeah, I'm just, I don't, I'm not a Hingham resident for the record. My name is, my name's Chad Fletcher. And I live in Boston. I, I was, I was, I was a Metco student and I wanted to there was, there was some, I, I missed, I know that I came on, when I, when I came on that the the part of the meeting where you can speak to the public had passed. But uh, there was, but there's one thing that I just, that I think is extremely important for me to bring up. And I hope that I think you get a couple minutes to do it now. But if you have other things, then.
Yeah, no, sorry, the, the public comment period has passed. Um, but we, we have it every meeting. So if you, um, if you want to come back and do it, um, if you want to shoot us an email too, um, at, at any point and um to, to talk about what you, um, what your concerns are, that's good. But we, we have moved past that in the agenda.
Okay, okay. Well, yes, I, I mean, I would definitely appreciate if you can actually, yeah, if I can get an email or email addresses. So I can.
Yeah, we're, we're all in the Hingham Public Schools um e, uh, website. If you, if you click, click on the School Committee link, we'll all of our email addresses are right there. I would be happy to talk to you.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you. Sorry you logged on for no reason. Um, does anyone else have any questions about the Counseling Department Report? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So um, next is seven point two, which is to review proposed section I of the Hingham Public Schools Policy Manual and Act as appropriate. We won't be voting on this tonight, actually. This is the um this is the first read. So this is the first read of section, Policy Section I, which is instruction. It's a huge section. Um, included in this one are policies related to the acceptable use of technology, field trips, guest speakers, volunteers, student progress reports, promotion and retention of students, evaluation of instructional programs, social media, English language education, homeschool, remote learning, class size, and library media programs and materials, among many other sections. Um, as with the other sections, the MASC Field Director Jim Hardy and Dr. Austin participated with the discussion and Dr. Austin shared the proposed policies with the staff administrators and the HEA for feedback. Um, again, this is a first, um, uh, it's, this is a first read of Section I. So if anyone has any questions or comments right now, we can do it. Um, otherwise we can um we can a, address it at the next, at the second read. Um, and by the way, this is the last section of the Policy Manual too. So we we can, we can adopt the whole thing once this is done. So that'll be good. So does anyone have any comments or questions on Section I? Okay, seeing none. Um, next is to seven point three to receive the winter twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one high school coaching recommendations. Dr. Austin?
I'm getting up with you. Thank you. I'm just getting into where I am. Uh, in your packets tonight, you have the uh, recommendations as we always um, always put in there for you. They don't take any action. Uh, they're really for your information in case you have any questions. Oh, that's in your packet. We have multiple, we have boys' basketball, girls' basketball, boys' hockey, uh, girls' hockey. These are all of our uh gymnastics, um skiing, swimming and um faculty manager uh for teams. We've listed those all up for you. Uh, I also want to thank you the coaches um for the time they give our students. Uh, and this is particularly hard during a COVID year that um is uh making more challenges, but they're doing a great job. So uh, you have a list in front of you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments on this?
Uh, I have a question, Carrie. Um, Dr. Austin or maybe Rick Swanson, I've seen you at, during the call. I heard that girls' basketball had to quarantine for a little while. Were any other teams impacted with a quarantine situation for the winter sports?
Yeah, we, we've had a, um, excuse me, a couple of quarantine situations. Our um our boys' hockey team currently is, is quarantined and that's a result of um a game they played last Wednesday night. Uh, player from the opposing team tested positive the next day. And that forced our entire, the boys' varsity team into quarantine, unfortunately, including their coaching staff. And um, you know, our girls', uh, as you mentioned, our girls' basketball team as well had been in quarantine during the, the winter break. So um, the, the numbers of quarantines around the Patriot League are um fairly concerning now. Uh, more than half of the boys' hockey teams are currently in quarantine in the Patriot League and about half of the girls' basketball teams are currently in quarantine. Uh, roughly half of the girls' hockey teams are, are in quarantine as well. And, and um, our girls' hockey team had, had experienced a quarantine uh situation as well early on. And I'm really hopeful that maybe that's a, you know, maybe that's signals a, a better trend for us in the weekend ahead. And uh, we're, we're hopeful that our sports teams will be able to, to continue on. A couple of quarantines so far, hopefully not too many more.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I hope the boys' hockey team is all safe and healthy. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on this one? Okay, seeing none. We are moving on to Section Eight, which is Subcommittee and Project Reports. Uh, we can start with Michelle.
Hello, um, a couple of things. Um, the Foster School Building Committee met last week and we are meeting again this week. Um, we had a very lengthy document to go through with all of the um uh requirements, um, and all the deadlines for the MSBA. Um, but that um is exciting work and that committee is filled with some great, experienced, dedicated people who are very excited to actually get working now um on the project. Um, and so I'll keep everyone informed as we move through the process. Um, last Wednesday, um, Dr. Austin hosted an, um, his monthly Metco Coffee with the Metco families in Boston that, um, I attended with him. And um it was a, a small group, but it was a great conversation. Um, Dr. Austin um had decided that he would have a host a monthly coffee with the Metco families, much like the coffees um in that he does, um, in the community. Um, because there are some concerns that the Metco families have that are particular to their needs, particularly around transportation and whatnot. Um, and then with some scheduling changes now that we're providing more in-person. Um, so that was a great um coffee. Um, and then uh, Special Ed Subcommittee, we are on for, I believe, Dr. Winess, uh, for September, I'm sorry, January nineteenth or nine AM. For our next meeting.
Thank you. Uh, Jen, do you have anything?
Uh, yep, um, the Foster School Council, we met on January sixth. And our next meeting is in March, where we will begin to work on the goals for next year's school room plan. And, and lastly, the, uh, next Foster Community Meeting is on January eighth.
Thank you. And Ness?
I have a couple of updates. On both meetings that I attended, HEF was on the sixth and they went through and gave an update on um their grants payout and who got those. They also are um just talking about um how to do the grants going forward in the springtime and possible candidates to come onto HEF in the future. And the other meeting on the sixth was um an equity professional development for some teachers who could attend. We started talking about the next steps, which are the courageous conversations for the um different groups that we'll be chatting with. And the final update is um, there are five warrants in your packet that I have signed since the last meeting, since the last update.
Great, thank you. Carlos?
Yeah, I um, a few uh updates. Uh, I did reach out to the, the Chair of the um MSBA, um, Madam Treasure Deb Goldberg, just to thank her personally for helping us out with the Foster and also the salary repairs at PIS. Uh, and she appreciate that. That's to show that we don't just call people and lobby them when, you know, we are desperate in need of uh, uh additional resources. But we have to continue uh maintaining the relationship with them. She was very pleased to hear uh from me uh on behalf of, of the School Committee. Um, and continuing on also with the legislative u, update, often we are asking um our state reps, you know, Murphy, Mesquino and Senator uh Patrick O'Connor for, to, you know, help us identify additional money. Uh, Patrick O'Connor reached out to us last week with the uh possible uh opportunity for us to apply for a grant for cybersecurity training. I did forward that information to uh Dr. Austin and his team. Um, we uh, the window to apply is uh from January fourth to the twenty-ninth. So there is an opportunity for us to get some additional money there. Uh, Capital Outlay met uh on the eighth. Uh, we are getting ready to go, uh, did I say Capital Outlay? Capital and Facilities met on the eighth and we're getting ready to go to Capital Outlay on the twentieth with a capital budget of two point two million dollars. Uh, it's looking, uh, you know, let's, let's hope that we get as much as possible so we can continue doing our preventive maintenance. Uh, PIS uh, uh, Council, School Council, uh, we met today. Uh, they uh continue working on the uh improvement uh plan uh for this year. Um, they are seeking a uh, a parent, either former parent or current parent, uh, they would like to join the community, uh, as a community representative to the council. So, you know, if you know anyone out here that would like to come back and get involved and help us uh in our school council at PIS, uh, you know, they are looking for a person that can reach out to Principal Melissa Smith. Um, what else? Uh, I was very pleased to hear that the kindergartens are back today. Uh, forty-three, huh, uh, forty-three students at PIS, uh, returned to school today. They were very happy to be back. And uh, it's, it's great to hear that uh we are making progress in bringing our students back. Um, SNAP is meeting tomorrow. Uh, what else? The, the, the PIS, I think I covered everything. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carlos. Uh, Libby, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, so Community Outreach Subcommittee has scheduled uh four different coffees with the superintendent in the month of February. And uh, so I'm gonna read off those dates and times. Um, the first one is Wednesday, February third at nine AM. Second one is Thursday, February fourth at seven PM. And then the next one is at the Senior Center, for the Senior Centers. These, they're all virtual. Uh, and it is on Wednesday, February tenth. And then the next one is for Lyndon Pond's residence. And that one will be held on Tuesday, February twenty-third at two o'clock. And the uh Community Outreach Committee will be meeting on uh this coming Wednesday at eleven o'clock. And then the next South School Council meeting is on uh January twenty.
Great, thank you. I'm looking forward to that. Liza, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, um, the Master Plan Committee met last week, January sixth, and read through the full draft of the report for the first time and then discussed um sort of the introduction and executive summary setup of that. Um, February first was the scheduled date for the Planning Board to present. That may be postponed, um, but I'll keep you posted. Um, and then the Middle School School Council will be meeting January nineteenth and salary negotiations we will review in Executive Session tonight.
Great, thank you. And all I have is that Policy will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine thirty. Okay, nine is other items as may not reasonably be known, uh, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Does anyone have any of those? Okay, I'm not seeing anything. Uh, so item ten is to adjourn to Executive Session, not to return to Open Session. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Executive Session, not to return to Open Session for the purposes of approving minutes of the Executive Session held on December twenty-first, twenty twenty and discussing strategy related to collective bargaining negotiations with HEA units A, B, C, D, and double A, the public discussion of which may be detrimental to the committee's bargaining position.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, Michelle?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Aye.
Carlos?
Aye, and CEPEC is meeting tomorrow as well.
Libby?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.